This meeting is being recorded.
Yes, it is. Hello, everyone. Welcome to the last of the special sessions for the Wyoming Culture Change Coalition's online conference. Holy moly, has it been something or what? And I should thank many of you on the line have been to many of the sessions. And please know how deeply appreciated that is. And with that, ask what, since it's our last one and it's intended for administrators and their teams, I am going to do something a little different. And thank you, Kate Craig, talking to you helped me rethink this. So you know, every home is in a very different position right now. Regarding not only survival, but how about the ability to, you know, do any culture change practices? So I just want to recognize that. And you know what I got to thinking, everyone, that's always been the case, even in good times. Every home, every team, every community has so many different aspects to it, right? That some things can happen and other things can't. And of course, it breaks my heart. I've heard some of you say, I don't think I can hear one more idea because I can't do it right now. And so I do want to issue like an apology. That can happen with culture change. You can hear so many good new ideas, you know, and some you can do and some you can't. So let that be the challenge. What of the practices you're hearing about could be helpful? You don't have to do any of them ever, but I want to take it on as a challenge myself even to think about which practices might be the most helpful in a time like this. So I'd like you to join me in thinking about this today together and we'll do more talking to each other. So while you're thinking about that, I want to show you something. I want, I want you all to see something here. So even during this past year, okay? You see the dates, April to now. We had five nursing homes sign up to do more intense culture change education and development implementation. And look at the stats, yes, two dropped out. So there's the reality, right? But the other great news is three stayed in and I just want to honor these three and show you what they did even during these rough times. So just want you to hear this and wonder, oh, that's not that hard. We could probably do that. So Star Valley hired a chef, they purposely hired a chef instead of the typical, let's say dietary manager, no offense to them, but it changes things right on a fact of chef who can then learn those other roles. And he and his team have helped this, this home now have a restaurant style dining. It's not even on the list, but they also changed the whole dining room. It does not look institutional. It is homey. It is sort of like at the farm. And if you want to see these photos and hear more, this was our last monthly webinar, last Friday, which is also recorded. And you can hear it from them. They also just started celebrating birthdays very individually. Not everyone gets the same balloon and the same cake, you know? It's just sort of getting back to, oh, how would you like to celebrate your birthday? They're also offering more ways for residents to volunteer if they want. They're really working on institutional language, changing it. They played some neat games. We could tell you that if they want to know anything more. They, they had half walls in their, in their shared rooms and they brought them to the ceiling during the project because that is considered privacy enhanced, a privacy enhanced room. And they also put up mailboxes. South Lincoln worked on dining room ambiance. They got new minimum table class. They added music. They put condiments on the table, salt and pepper on the table and more things. They also started to do individualized birthdays, whatever the person, what it means to them to celebrate their birthday. They also worked on welcoming. Oh, and guess what? So did Star Valley. Shoot, they've done so many more that are on the list. I apologize. They were also able to just create a more welcoming process involving people who already lived there. So people have lived there for a while, take a gift, they plan out a gift from things they've learned about the person even before they move in. And those residents, some who have lived there already serve as sort of a, you know, mentor buddy. There's not really a title. And then they also do it very personalized. Would you like for all of us to come with you or is that too much? Would you like a party or is that too much? And they're doing what fits the person. They also have worked hard to decrease institutional language and they focused on some documentation. They're revamping all the initial paperwork when someone moves in to really get to know someone. And they changed language as they did it and they looked, they looked how to welcome people. Isn't that cool? Granite Rehab, they worked on rituals around death and individualized memorial services. They also went crazy, you guys, with music. They're learning people's music preferences as they move in. Staff are creating relationships over their favorite bands, everyone. And they're getting it in the care plan. They have a new, it's boom, it is in the activity assessment now. It is happening. And because of all this focus on music, they're starting a choir. And last but not least, they finally found a licensed massage therapist in their area who is now coming to the nursing home. I forget, like once a month or twice a month, a nursing home is paying for it. You sign up for your massage and staff can too. So isn't that neat? That has happened during this past year. And the other good news, thank you to Life Care Pastor, you guys on the line. And they joined midway because like you saw, we've lost a couple of homes. And isn't that cool that Life Care Pastor joined midway and to thank them and honor them for that, we invited them to stay in the project. So they're actually going to get a year and a half. So that'll be fun to see. Oh, look at all they're doing. Brittany, I'd let you say it, but I'm going to go through facts, okay? So residents helping with meal prep, really, isn't that cool? You can ask them questions if you want. They're working towards kitchen open 24 hours a day. They've got some schematics to get rid of nurses station and create living room, house, home. They're changing colleagues, the porch lights, mailboxes, culture change task force. Team members dine with residents, individual memorials. And thank you to Wyoming Retirement, they too joined even later than Life Care Pastor. They have already done these first three. They've got more snacks available where residents don't have to ask of them. They're involving CMA's and care planning and they've broadened who is involved in not group activities, but staff just helping residents live if they want to write letters or go outside or they were dancing or store the staff for a while. They all help people go exercise. Isn't that great? And they're working on community meetings, their first one, but two weeks from today. And getting outdoor preferences on the care plan and getting a staff member to be what we call a troubleshooter. If you have any questions, let me know. So it kind of just, it meant a lot to me to realize that, that happened in some homes even during the struggles of right now. And I want to honor, you all have different struggles. So we are taking applications for three new homes because we already have two. Thank you, Life Care Pastor and Wyoming Retirement. If you're interested, please let me know. And I also want to say ideally, we want a large team involved. Of course, ideally you would too, but given the status quo, if it can only be two staff members to read or on the calls, it's different. Sometimes only have one person, it's okay. Sometimes we have a big room plus residents. Every place is different, but we'll, we'll work with you. And those practices come from the artifacts of culture change. This is the 2.0 version. I'm very blessed to have been involved with the original and this one. This came out last year, February, and I don't know if you know this, Wyoming, but you are one of the very first states as a whole to use it. And I want you all to realize this tool could be helpful to you whether you get in this project or not. Because if you take the time to actually look at it, you give a copy to everyone, guess what? Every single thing they read, they're going to learn. These are considered changes, you know, culture change practices that change institutional culture. So please use it for education. Hopefully it'll inspire you all. Oh my gosh, let's do some of this. And we're using it as a self-assessment tool. So you fill it out and the way you fill it out is you, you, you read a practice and you all decide together. You have to have like confirmation that we're not missing something here. Do we agree that's fully implemented in our home and you just make a check mark? Or is it partially implemented only in one neighborhood, whatever, or is it not a current practice? And then, oh, I didn't highlight this. Let me go back. Sorry. Look at this, Star Valley, of course, everyone's artifacts increased. And then we also watched turnover. Can you believe even in today's day and age, turnover decreased a little bit at Star Valley and a little bit at Granite. That's pretty exciting. So that's some culture change practices that have gone on. I noticed some are more difficult than others, some are easier than others. And I just can't help but say, I really believe culture change is still the answer. And I'm not going to go through everything I've done on most webinars. It's at the bottom of the handout when you get it. Some people said, hey, all the sessions were kind of alike because they were. Because I imagined, you know, maybe only one social worker came to the social work session. And so I did kind of give the same message to everyone, just so you know, a lot about life versus care. And a lot about choices, the regs, many regs, the regs on highest practicable level of mental and physical and psychosocial being and the seven domains of well-being landed in the regs. There's a lot of strong culture change, right, in the regs and sometimes that is helpful to teams. And I won't go through the slides, but culture change tends to be the answer because people want to work in these change cultures typically, want to live there, you're going to make money. It's more efficient care when you go per person instead of according to the institution. You're going to have, you know, higher satisfaction, fewer problems, calls to the ombudsman, you know the routine, even better compliance. So, so there we go. And when I say culture change, of course, I mean changing institutional culture. So let's brainstorm. What practices have you heard of ever that you think would be very fitting to a crisis? To challenging times that we find ourselves in. And some of you were with me last night with Linda Shell. And this, this idea came up, Cindy Prince is here and so is Brittany and maybe some others, I, I'm not sure. But the idea came up, you know, what practices actually save us time, you know? So I'm going to stop talking and ask you all, what comes to your mind that we could maybe identify as culture change practices that might help in a, in a hard time? Just unmute yourselves. I'll make sure I'm pressing the button that says ask to unmute.
So I'll start during COVID with all of that stuff going on and we had, you know, everybody in their rooms and no communal dining, all of those things kind of going on. We had elders who were taking meal orders or helping our nutrition staff push the carts to collect trays. Different things like that because they, they, they want to contribute. They want to make your life easier. They, they, they want to be a part of their community. And it was so helpful on days when we were super shorthanded or just, you know, needed, needed the extra set of hands.
Wonderful. Hey, Brittany, you know what I want to say? Why stop? You know?
We don't, we're not.
Yeah, good. I mean, especially if the resident wants to do it, right? Good for you guys. Are some of them still doing that kind of thing? Helping out?
Yeah, and they've started helping in our ice cream shop. They help lead, lead activities or set up activities. They help with lots of stuff.
Good, good, good. So guess what, everyone, that is considered a culture change practice. I mentioned it, Star Valley did it, you know, creating more and more resident volunteerism opportunities. There's so many. It's their home. Many of them want to help and they're sometimes bored. That's no offense to anyone, you know? Meaning and purpose. Thank you. Who else?
During COVID and prior to COVID, we had elders that would help set the tables, put silverware out. They like to do that kind of stuff, pull rags and laundry and different things.
Yeah. Thank you, Kelly. All right. Good.
And then something else that we did during COVID is all of our like non-essential staff took the feeding assistance course, took the temporary CNA course so that we could help on the floor in case of a staffing shortage.
Yep. Good. So notice everyone, in a crisis, we do things different and it makes you wonder what could we hold on to and not go back, not go backwards to what we used to do. So resident involvement, I, I just want to toss this out there. If none of you have done this, ask, you know, those who could do this, would you be interested in becoming a visitor? You know, a way to combat the loneliness is residents visiting with other residents, really being intentional. Almost serving as a volunteer, almost like putting on the bat, the badge, if they wanted to, they wouldn't have to. But I mean, just be more intentional about that volunteer role as well. Do we need to do that?
Carmen, this is Kate. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thanks, Kate.
Um, one of, you know, a lot of the things that I've been working on have been much more administrative. Processes that were bulky, that were, time sucks. We weren't getting the return out of the process. So, so relooking at how we're doing business. But on resident volunteers, one of the things that I'm, got on my list to pose to people, we have a couple of residents who actually were lifelong volunteers and so they do help with some things. But on the visitors, I've actually wondered if we can do a deep dive into our activities assessments and find those residents who really find a lot of meaning in helping others. And having them help assist with some of the one-to-one things, you know, there's a thin line before I'm, you know, making them do the work of the nursing home. But if it's something that's meaningful to them and they want to do, then I can pair up that resident with somebody who is needing some of that extra one-in-one time. And be able to not only meet some of those recreational and cognitive and motor skill development, but also, you know, we've lost our sense of community with all the isolation.
Thank you, Kate. I love it. Just go for it.
One of the things that I proposed to my team, I'm having to rebuild my leadership team right now. So we've not launched this, but it's kind of with that welcoming wagon idea, you know, formalizing and, and celebrating somebody coming in because it's a hard transition. Being a little bit more focused interdisciplinary with the family as they transition. But having an opportunity for lunch with the administrative team for that new resident. And if they're not interested in that, you know, having some sort of alternate where they can meet with us. And possibly doing that with the families as well.
You can just do it, my friend. All these things are in your heart. You just gotta do it, don't you?
Yeah.
Good for you. May I tag on to that, everyone? Kate, you brought up work, like, like there's always that caution, we're not making residents do our work, you know? And, and having done a lot of study of regs, everyone, I want you to be reassured that there is a regulation that works with us on this point. It's kind of funny. I'm so sorry it's not on a slide, but it used to be like two or three sentences, okay? And it started like this, residents have the right not to work. Period. And I feel like we all stopped reading because that's kind of the mindset over the years, right? And, and guess what? It goes on. The next sentence says, residents have the right to work if they want. And then you have to, you know, agree to it. And are they going to get paid or not? And, and it's in the care plan. So it's very self-explanatory and it's very positive. I want you all to know that. It used to have a tag number. It kind of doesn't right now, but if you did a search in the regs and you just use the word work, it comes up pretty quickly. Okay?
I'm glad you mentioned that. I was actually looking at that myself because I didn't want to get in myself into a place where it really should be an employment situation and we have not respected it in that way. But there's definitely, I agree with you, we've over insulated ourselves from that and it's robbing everybody.
Yes, you got it. I love how you talk, Kate. We've over insulated ourselves. And you know, just remember everyone, there's a whole range of possibilities. As we know, most people living in a nursing home tend to not want to be paid. And therefore it's a big win. They love helping, right? However, as you've just inferred, Kate, it's also a truth that someone might want to be paid. And think of some nursing homes serve people, like, I want to say, like, sometimes a younger population, maybe with more of a mental health feel and they need jobs, right? They're trying to get back on their feet. So there are technical job programs where people get paid money. So I do like to remind you, there is a range. Okay, so, hey, Patty Hall, could you send the link to Don Ryan for this session? Rather than me? Anyone else have Don Ryan? Patty, can you do that?
Yeah, I can do that.
Thank you, my dear. Okay. And do any, does anyone else want to bring up a culture change practice that seems fitting in a time of challenge?
I think something we talked about last night, letting residents sleep.
Yes.
We talked about changing positions. If, if you rounded on them and they were in one position and you round on them again and they're in a different position, let them sleep. If they don't need to be woken up, don't wake them up.
Ooh, so Cindy, wasn't that a good one, Cindy?
That was fantastic. I'm super excited to share it with the team.
So I might just say it again, I've always heard this as a best practice. And so I've sort of thought, well, everybody must know it by now. But the idea, everyone, is, okay, this is an easy example. If you look at me in my bed, I live in the nursing home and I'm sleeping like this, my hands are by my head, I'm all stretched up, okay? And then the next time you come around to peek at me and not wake me, let's say I'm all spread out. So you know that I changed my position. So the point there is to be more observant and if someone changed their own position, that's better than us doing it for them. And us potentially waking them up and that translating into a fall, let alone interrupted sleep. So Cindy really got excited and I'm with her. That's an example of a practice that saves you time and it's better in the long run, right? So thank you, Cindy. I think we need to do more with that probably. Does anyone else see any culture change practice like a big win right now? If not, I have a list, but I want to ask you all first. So keep thinking and see, see what you think of this. Now, this is a list of ideas that I'm sort of mulling over along these lines and they could maybe become our next year's education. We do a webinar every single month. And here we go. It's not in really an order, but first of all, I don't have time to go into all of them, but there are many practices that help you build relationship, cost no money. You can do it walking by each other in the hall. And then when people feel well-known, then they tend to like working there, right? There's in the research, friendship keeps people at their jobs, right? That kind of thing. So that's one. The next one would be the learning circle. I'm just presuming you've all heard a little bit about that. This idea of actually hearing from one another in most meetings. So you would kind of redesign how you do a meeting. And it can go quickly, but it can be any meeting, whether it's resident council, I recommend it actually. Or any staff meeting. If you had a family council, you know, here's what people say, oh my gosh, I love the, the circle. Because I actually feel heard. People looked at me when I talked. This is a resident of an assisted living talking to me once. After all we did was put the chairs in a circle. Isn't that great? And so people feel heard and their ideas are shared and to be honest, you're going to solve problems quicker altogether. And then community meetings, hopefully you've gotten that message. They are so strong for building community. And you can do whatever you want. You can keep them always lighthearted with birthdays and, you know, what's coming tomorrow, you know, the calendar and/or you can go deeper to solve problems, you know? It's up to you and your community. A joke could be told or weather report. Some people review policies, believe it or not. It can be so proactive, so beautiful, meaningful. Now, it would be another meeting, but maybe you can combine it with something. I don't know. Guess what? Some teams right now are considering doing it during lunchtime, which is a fabulous idea. Most people are in a room, right? Unless you have a whole bunch of dining rooms, but maybe you could have more than one. I don't know. More and more ideas about moving towards serving the individual instead of the institution. Kind of like what, what Cindy just brought up, more individual practices that end up saving you money and time. Another one, everyone, is if you wake people up, shake, 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 wake them up. Right there is an example of wasted time and wasted money. And you don't do that and you peek at people instead and you honor sleep. There are just so many benefits, right? Being well-rested, plus you didn't exert the energy to make someone get up. It's like a tiny example that we, that Cindy just, just mentioned. Okay, then we have, we could, we could do some sharing about moving into what you might call a neighborhood culture. So neighborhoods, you know, we use that word instead of venus. That these neighborhoods start to get to know each other better. They could have their own type of community meeting where they learn about each other. They build relationship. They do things special on their neighborhood. Guess what? I've seen, I've seen block parties on neighborhoods. Isn't that fun? And others can might be invited to the block party on the Antelope neighborhood. I've seen mayors elected, you see? Another cool thing, people who work on that neighborhood, they're very likely to come to the neighborhood meeting. But the nurse who works on Antelope neighborhood would probably never go to the resident council meeting, you see? So people who work there get more involved. And then we also have seen that people who live on that neighborhood also get more involved because it's closer to them compared to the larger resident council. By the way, you could decide not to have the once a month large resident council. You could do neighborhood councils instead. Many places have, and you could do a daily community meeting instead. Many places have. Then we've got, look what just came up, more, more possibilities for resident volunteerism. And then I would quickly move into families doing the same thing. The families of your residents, they are so grateful to all of you and they want to help. Why don't we figure out more and more ways they could do things, especially now that they can come back, right? Maybe a webinar that's kind of like Culture Change 101. One of the teams this year said, Carmen, we need help educating people in our team. They don't know what culture change is. We could do that. There's a set of culture change principles that's lovely to look at and you could raise it. You could look at a principle once a month or something. I think language takes a lot of time. I never mind going back to language training if you agree. We can change our language, cost no money, something we have power over that we could change even in times of struggle. And then maybe the ideas of going deeper to learn people better. We tend to, our forms fail us. How many of you have gone to the funeral and learned something new, right? Sadly, it's happened to all of us. So ideas along those lines and then similarly getting care plans to be much more individualized, to be watching out for generic practices versus individualized practices. And then the last webinar would naturally be the year two homes, sharing again. So I would love feedback on any of that. Did it prompt other ideas? Or do you like it? What do you think?
I think it's great.
Thank you, Brittany. Others of you that are feeling the weight of the times we're in, did, did those topics feel okay to you? That's my way of asking.
Yeah, I liked it.
Great. And who said that? Cindy?
Yeah, Cindy from Legacy.
Of course you'd like it. You, me and Brittany like everything, don't we?
Birds of a feather.
That's right. Sisters in culture change, join the party, everyone. Uh, anybody else? Patty, as an ombudsman, you don't like any of those ideas, do you?
Of course I do. I like them all. I think, you know, I worked in nursing homes as a, as an LPN for 32 years and I think it'd be excellent. You know, the more you get to know your residents, the easier it is to care for them. And it does save you time when it's about the resident. Because then you don't have them, you know, constantly on the call light and constantly asking for things. Everybody's happy in it and it does, it saves time, you know?
Yeah. Thank you.
I like all those ideas.
Wonderful. I'm just trying to make it, you know, feel okay. Let's see, Kate, how about you? Let's see Kate, how about you?
I was just talking with my mute button on.
Yeah.
Which is much like parenting, by the way.
That's funny.
I, you know, I actually am trying not to start to wax philosophical like I can tend to do um. My mind is spinning with a lot of the specifics of the ideas, but then also the, you know, the overall maybe nature of the talk that you and I had a couple of weeks ago about um what it's like on the ground right now. So I want, this doesn't really fit with your question, but I want to just put this out there. I think that with all the frustrations, the barriers, the things that have not quite made sense to us and the extra work that we've all had to, had to do and been glad to do, but it's, you know, a cumulative. I think that if we're not careful, it creates in us a poverty mentality. And then all we can see is the lack. Whenever there's disruption, there are things emerging in that. And I think that if we were to turn around and look at our facilities, just take the time to sit and watch meals, watch a neighborhood, watch the shift change, watch activities. Um, observe the meeting instead of maybe necessarily participating. I think that if we have eyes to see, we will see a lot of these things trying to naturally emerge because people will try to still avoid themselves. So different types of leadership, different residents who are coming up with ideas are maybe more involved or more vocal or less vocal. I wager that if we really had seen eyes and looked around our facilities, we would see a lot of the things emerging and we wouldn't have to come up with a lot of ideas our own. We just need to water the ones that are already starting to grow.
Well, my gosh, water those that are grown, that are starting to grow. You do wax philosophical, don't you? And it's gorgeous. Oh my gosh.
It's an illness, really.
No, no, no. Please don't think of it that way. Cindy, you get to hear it a lot, don't you? It's beautiful. Wow. Well, you know, we could add that. Let's, let's become better observers, you know? Now, I gotta tell you something, Kate, you, you mentioned, what if we just watch a meal rather than participate? I, I had a friend living in a nursing home, so I did watch a meal by also participating, eating the meal. I highly recommend this because you realize things like, oh my gosh, none of these residents be helping each other. Or these two hate each other. And of course, I want to change it. I can't, but you guys could, you know? Just, you're right, like allow yourself the gift of time, an hour here or there to simply observe and then maybe ask questions according to what you saw, right? That is so beautiful.
I really think that's, for me, that's what um captivated me so much about the learning circles in the first session.
Yeah.
There's so much opportunity there. It, it is, it's a method of engagement. It's a method of study. It's a method of getting, it's a dashboard. It's the best dashboard, you know? Um, it's it's a way for us to see the things that we have not allowed ourselves to see um. Or been so busy or so focused on the lack that we've eliminated our ability to see the opportunities. I think the learning circles, they, they really are an assessment. I think it's starts with that.
I think you're right. Thank you. Kate, um, some of you've got to learn from Lorraine Norton. She's kind of the mother of learning circles to our movement. She didn't invent them, but she comes from organizational um design. And Kate, uh, these, these, these leaders of our movement, I just like almost drool like when they talk because they're so smart and they're so good and they're so right. And everyone, Lorraine painted this beautiful picture like Kate is as well. Where, you know, there's a reason of the circle and there's a reason never to have a table. I actually hadn't really heard that till she said it this, this month. Because there's so much to see and observe in someone's body language, right? Plus you see them better, you hear them better, you see their mouth. And oh, I love how she would use her hands to kind of indicate, you know, this, this give and take, this help me Kate, this almost like weaving of so much happening at once. It's just, I can't even describe it very well. And like you said, it captivated you too. So let's also, maybe if you're willing everyone to start committing to trying the learning circle, let's do it. Does anyone else have anything else about this list? I think I'm going to suggest this, this list, we can tweak it as a first draft of moving into our second year. And, and would you guys like it if we brought learning circles to the top maybe? That might be a good idea.
I, you know, personally, I would. It's actually something I've asked for and not use the word learning circle, but I've asked for it at the state level with OHLS and the Board of Nursing and whatnot because it's I think, and you and I already spoke, for you to carry through what's, what's on your heart for all the nursing homes. Um, requires that feedback where we can tell you what it's really like. And that's where all that synergy starts to happen and we can um simultaneously relieve each other of the burden of the things that are happening on and be heard. That's important. Um, but then also I think once we feel like we're heard and, and the issues are recognized, that weight comes off and the good stuff that's underneath that is the reason why we're still here and haven't run screening from our buildings. That can, that can come forth and flow a little bit better, but it will be with people who understand where we all are at.
Yep, beautiful. So really starting to do it in lots of different arenas. Uh, like Kate, are you almost imagining doing it on some of the the higher level phone calls, you know, that people are having with safety?
So I've really been pushing pretty hard for, for that. And I think that I don't know, Cindy probably needs to chime in. Um. I know that I'm being heard. I don't know if I'm being appreciated.
I appreciate you.
So uh, one of the things I, and I think I said it to Dr. Hart in one of the calls, I can't remember which, but I assured her that all the nursing homes are um, fully able to Florence, not enkale the hell out of this thing, but we need the, we need the support. Um, you know, the realistic understanding of what it is in the ground, because all the decision makers are making decisions in their usual and customary ways, but we're not in usual and customary times. Um, and we're, we're all very separated. So the person making the ruling on this part of visitation is in a different room than the one making a ruling on this part of the visitation. And neither one of them are in communication with a rural nursing home and what it actually looks like. And so I think that in order for I mean, this sounds a little bit dramatic, but I think for the industry to survive, we need to all be at the table together.
Yeah.
Um, if we really have the goal of high quality resident care, then every entity should be engaged with that. Um, so everywhere that I can try to form those tables, I want to form those tables. Um, you're just the first person that has smiled and nodded her head and said, yes, I agree.
Yes, good. Well, the starting place, isn't it? Well, and we have Patty Hall, state ombudsman on the line, who says she loves all these ideas. So Patty, maybe you can help get, get the circle idea going because people feel more heard. And they can express, you know, boots on the ground, what's happening here.
And we're all, we're all after the exact same thing. I think having the ombudsman involved is actually perfect because there, this is a protection of the resident rights and quality and that they have a good place to live.
Well, I, Kate, I was actually smiling and nodding my head yes too while you were talking, so. Now you got two people.
I just, I want to tell you something special, guys, about the ombudsman. When, when we were creating these special sessions, do you notice there was not one for ombudsmen because I had just hung out with a bunch of them. You know, months ago, uh, Michigan group of them. And I was being with them all day, I realized they are a friend to all, right? They work with all of us. So we invited them to all the sessions and they came to all the sessions. Isn't that neat? That's really neat, Wyoming. You can be proud of that. So congrats to you all. Thank you Patty for having such a showing.
You're welcome.
Awesome. Hey, everybody. Who else? Other people on the line? Do you want to chime in at all with anything? Questions, ideas? We can give this list, circles. And I'm pressing the button that says we should be able to unmute.
The, um, I do want to add, I was, I didn't got my camera to work, sorry. Um. On the moving towards the individual before the institution, I completely agree with that, but and I think you'll agree with what I'm about to say. I, I have two, two things in my, so my, my um mantra, if you will, for legacy is that it will be a great place to live, a great place to work, and then we'll have the financial stewardship to support both. Um, and it is a driver for me truly. So when I think about individual before, before the institution, I do agree, except that we have two things that we're trying to achieve in a nursing home. And one is individualized care. And then the other one is a healthy community of people who are receiving individualized care. And that sounds beautiful, but again, on the ground, sometimes it's kind of hard because what one resident may want, like we have one that wants to watch her murder shows in the main area. And it really causes some disruption for some residents who are very bothered by these things. She's, she's, you know, contending for her rights and not really understanding the rights of the group. So, you know, one example, but you know, from an operational standpoint, I, I want to do both. I want to be individualized, but I want to do it in a way that is growing a good community. Because if I have a community, the care is going to happen much more organically. Then if it's just individualized, to me, individualized is a patient. But a community of individuals, that's when you have residents.
Whoa, wow.
So I just want to add that in there because I think there's a, yeah.
Just say that again, would you?
Um.
Last part.
What did?
Well, a community of individuals.
Uh, oh, when I think of, like when we focus just on the individual, that to me reminds me of when I was a nurse in a, in a ward. It reminds me of a patient and it totally individualized, we're talking about a patient. We don't even bill in individualized ways. So, so when we have a community, you know, what I have to run is a community of healthy individuals. And if I can have those healthy individuals forming together into one community, not separate, not patients. But I'm promoting their health in a way that promotes the community. That creates a situation where care is happening organically as a product of that kind of community. Healthy community, healthy people, right?
Kate, you speak so eloquently. It's fantastic. You are so wonderful to listen to. You are very motivating.
Well, thank you. I am, my child, just a little bit ago, I heard her say, I don't, I wouldn't bother mom. She's going to tell you how it is. So maybe there's a, all kinds of Kates knocking around in this head, but I, I do tend to be philosophical about it. I'm a long view person. I'm very rarely focused on just the immediate right in front of me. And, you know, it's, I'm aware of where we're going. Kind of person.
It's wonderful.
Um, so Kate, could, I, I'm a little perplexed actually. Part of me wants to say it's interesting that you bring up, when you focus on an individual that's a patient. Uh, you're apparently a nurse, right? Sounds like.
Yeah, my background. I was not a great one, but I am like.
You know, you guys want to hear something ironic? I was just on another call. Oh Kate, you were there. And the QIO web. And I've been talking a lot about that word patient because it, it's like a passive position that things are done unto you. And I keep trying to say, let's, let's think about not using that word, you know? This is a person more, like all of us are people, whether we're a patient or not. And we're a patient to a physician typically. Maybe a patient in a hospital. So now my brain is confused. Um, because aren't we supposed to give care per the individual? And that's a good thing.
How I, yeah, here's how I think of it. Um, so most of my, most of my nursing background is actually public health. So tuberculosis, I've done refugee, I've done a lot of community. So in public health, um, like I did STD clinic, when somebody comes in and they have an STD, my patient is the community. That person is a sign of something broken in that community and I need to get to the root of that. So I do my investigation. I find others, you know, and so on. When I worked on med surg or ICU or I did ER, my patient is that patient. And so that patient is assessed and there are things that are needed. And so I gather up all the interventions and I apply them to the patient. So I come into the room, I'm invading their space and I'm applying all these things. And it's appropriate for me to force things, that's a strong word, but it's, it's appropriate for me to take all these things, invade their space and apply it to them. Until it's not appropriate. And then it's time to discharge them to whatever venue they're going to go. In a nursing home, um, I don't see individualized care as me gathering up. I do all my assessments. Find all the things that are important to them. I put it in the care plan and I come in and I apply that. And, and all I've really done is achieve a culture where all the staff are checking the boxes to make sure that there's no overt violation of the care plan in the documentation. Right?
Yeah.
Um, so I'm, that's, that's an atmosphere of taking care of a patient. But if I'm caring for a resident, then what I'm doing is I'm I'm a student of them. I am noticing and learning about what is important to them. And then instead of bringing in a bunch of stuff and applying it to them, I am clearing out the clutter around them to create the environment where they can be who they're supposed to be. And that beyond that, my job is the integrity versus despair. That's where they are in life, right?
Yeah.
Create as big of a space for them to have the opportunity to look back over their life with integrity, whatever process they need to get there. Can I get them all there? Probably not, but my obligation is to create that space. So for me, that visual is a patient individualized and I'm invading their space and applying the therapies. A resident is an individual, so I'm creating the space for them to be who they are in the best way possible. And the only way I'm invading our space is to assist them in doing that.
Got it. I love it. And you know what, you know what hurts us everyone is actually the word care. Because what you're describing, Kate, is life. And you heard me bring that up too, guys, that you tend to talk about fear too much. And probably in some, some instances, we actually mean life. And I notice when we talk only about care, we're kind of ignoring the life that this person is living. You guys only work there. You go home to your home and live your life. They're still living their life, right? And it seems to me, I mean, I just learned this from culture change leaders myself, like what would happen if we first of all, change our language and second of all, you know, tended to the life, not just here. And that's kind of what you're saying too, I think. Could that be Kate?
Yep.
It's interesting, like the words, right?
Yeah, I, I mean, anybody outside of a nursing home tends to look at a nursing home as a place where people come to die about their days. And they don't, they come here to live, just like their counterparts in the community. They just can't maintain homeostasis without some help.
Right.
Um. And I think that's been painful, you know, I'm, I'm in a, I'm a hospital based nursing home, so I'm not in the same building, but I'm owned by a hospital system. And there was, and I'm not at all trying to pick one in my hospital system. This is something that I've probably even said because I never thought I would be in a nursing home working, let alone love it. I mean, it's where I'm supposed to be. Mid forties before I figured that out, but I figured it out. Um. But there was a, you know, we have a memorial celebration every year for the residents who had passed away in the previous twelve months. And this year we had more than what we've had before. And there were comments um from my, my colleagues on the acute care side that were very dismissive. Um, and so I poked into that deliberately until somebody finally said, where I knew they were all thinking, you're a nursing home, they die, what's the big deal? And so then I painted that picture, absolutely, but that's not the purpose of them coming here. And we have the same people we did at the beginning. You guys have new patients every few days. We know these people, we know their families. So it's part of patients every few days. We know these people. We know their family. So it's part of us that dies. It's, it's groups, it's waves of deaths that are coming. The ones who are surviving have just lost their friends, the ones they did act to. So we have grief. You know, it's not just a, the bed's empty now, let's fill it again. There's, there's an entire life that's happening within here. And it may not be the adrenaline stories for the ER healthcare heroes, but it is, it is people losing people. It is humanity deeply affected. And the impact is, is deep and it's long. And it's, you know, it's, mute me when you need to, Carmen. But I, I, I think, you know, and you and I spoke because I, I was one of the facilities that was not going to be able to do the, the, the project because I looked around and I just, I don't have enough around me to start new endeavors safely. I have to be very particular because I can't risk starting something and people getting excited and we can't carry it out. And I don't have enough around me to be able to do a new content each month. My community is deeply impacted and I'm very mother hen about that right now. I need to find the things that are emerging and water them. I need to find the things that are trying to emerge, like the old way of doing things and kill them when nobody's looking. Um, and I need to, I need to pick the few things that are going to grow into the robust trees that I need growing, not a whole bunch of flowers that bloom once and then die away. And so I think, well, I probably should stop. I'm taking up your time now.
Okay. Well, Kate, this is kind of why I revamped this, just to be more tender and sensitive of what's going on. And some teams are just not going to be able to do this project. That's not the deal. And maybe some teams can hear a webinar and walk away with one idea that, that can be done. I don't know, you know? That's always how it's been. So we, we honor you. We, we love you and you, you're amazing. We need you. So, you know, hang in there as much as you can with us. And let me just close out, everyone. What is next? I will not go through, but on the handout, it's sort of like a summary to administrators of what we did in each session. Because you are the administrator. You hold the key to a lot of things happening or not. So I summarized kind of the conversation with residents, families, therapy, dining, activities, social services, fun stuff, environmental services. Oh, wonderful stuff. Um, let's see, nursing, I just don't have time. And last but not least, I want to share with you a couple of things people have told me. I've been asking, how are you supposed to keep spreading knowledge of culture change? On the other side, that's what people are saying, keep spreading it, keep telling everyone. Not everyone knows. And someone put down YouTube videos. I'm curious what you think of that and how long a video should be if we, if we did something different. Also, someone said pamphlets and examples. I'm wondering if the, if it's like a tip sheet would be helpful. I want to ask those first. Any comments about videos or tip sheets?
I think YouTube videos would be great, Carmen. Maybe half hour, 45 minutes, something that you can watch. And, you know, and just kind of get the gist of each portion. Or hit, you know, tying that with your tip sheets and saying, this, this video, we're going to talk about, you know, therapies and culture change. And, and these are the bullet points that you can hit. That would be great.
Oh, thank you. Anybody else?
I agree. I'm more of a pamphlet and tip sheet person, but that's because I'll turn them into talking points or whatever for meetings or, you know, whatnot. But I also know that I'm rare in that, you know, most people, the videos, I think are, they're easier for people to sit down and digest.
I'm not as eloquent as you are, Kate.
The videos are what, Kate?
They're, they're more palatable to sit down and digest. I, I don't know what to do about length though, because I think you can do a lot with 30 or 45 minutes, but I don't know that, I don't know that people have the intention stamina right now.
Carmen, do you have a website for culture change?
Did she freeze?
I think she did.
So you can go to, uh, the Pioneer website? And view all of the, the videos from this month?
I, I was just.
Uh, you can email her and she will send you all the other items.
Like the links and the tidbits and the YouTube videos would be beneficial for her website to get the information out there. That might be an easy way to share with the families.
Uh, website for families, I heard, Kelly.
Yeah, I was just wondering if on your website, if you had it posted, like where you could put like the tidbits and the pamphlets and YouTube videos, and that could be something that could be shared, like your website. And then that information would be readily available for anyone that wanted to indulge into those.
Sure. Yep. Good. Okay. Last question. I know we're at time, but this is kind of exciting. The other suggestion was to do in person again. And guess what? That is in the grant. I can come. There's money to do five workshops throughout your state. And I'm also thinking to combine it, think about places we, we could be, not only for, you know, the majority of nursing homes in that region to come, but also maybe, oh, boy, are you ready for this? It, it's so powerful to see a different way. And so I'm wondering if we could identify places like Morning Star, where Kelly's from, but they're doing culture change. Would any of you go to Fort Waschaki? And then we also have, like Sage Living, used to be St. John's and Jackson. Would people go to those places? And then thank you, Kate, you guys have already offered the Legacy and Gillette, and I'm sure you have special things you could highlight. Basin is another one. Casper, Cheyenne, Pinedale, these are places that have been suggested. But I don't live there. So what do y'all think?
I can help you get set up here, Carmen.
Thank you. So Casper is kind of a no brainer, right? You should do Casper and do Cheyenne, probably everybody. Is that true? Those two are easy?
I would be interested. And I can travel to Casper, Basin or Jackson, that's within driving distance the same day.
Okay.
Yeah, Casper is pretty centralized, right? Compared to the rest of us.
Yeah.
Yes, and they have all the lodging and everything. In Basin, I think you'd run into lodging issues.
That's true.
I mean, you've got Grable, but, or Worland.
Christina, I stayed in Basin at the hotel that was like a brothel. And they kind of, they kind of exploit it. Like you're in Miss Lily's room. I'm like, I don't want to be in Miss Lily's room.
Well, listen, so I did STD nursing for several years, so I can handle brothels. And I can also build a hell of a COVID unit. So we could just create our own structure of need.
There you go. Isn't that funny?
Nice. Well, actually, we do still have our COVID unit up, so we might have 10 beds available if you wanted to stay in the COVID unit.
I might pick that over to the hotel.
Experience it.
Oh, this will be fun, ladies.
Okay. I'm so excited.
Oh, me too. You guys, you're the best. Thank you for being there. So the last minute, this is the end, the last one. Way to go, Wyoming. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Carmen.
Thank you, Carmen.
You bet. Feel free to email me with ideas if they pop to your head after all this, okay? I appreciate it so much.
And if Brittany's still on, I sent her a direct message in the chat box if she could look at it or possibly email me. It's kelly@morningsar.
Um, I can, you guys. I don't see the chat working, so I'll, I'll connect you or email you guys, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Bye, everybody.
Bye, guys.
So much.
Bye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.